Crystal, you ready? You ready? Good evening, folks. The second meeting of the 24th Council will come to order. All councilors are present this evening. We'll begin tonight with a moment of silence and then we'll turn it over to Counselor Basson to introduce some special guests who will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance tonight. So please join us in a moment of silence.
Welcome. Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to introduce our Boy Scout Troop 29 from District 4. If you all want to come down here by the microphones, please. Their troop leader is Lanny Gilbertson and they are working on getting their citizenship in the Community Badge tonight by coming to our meeting to learn about government here. So if you all want to be at the microphones there, you can start us off in the pledge and then we'll go ahead and make sure to say it in Spanish as well. And don't worry, we will help you out.
... allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much for being here, boys.
Thank you, Counselor, and thank you, gentlemen. I will say we were doing better on our Spanish when Counselor Pena was president, so we all have to go home and practice. A few administrative notes. Civic Plaza parking passes are provided for members of the public. If you parked in the Civic Plaza parking structure, you can obtain a parking pass from our council staff at the sign-up table. The council generally takes a break at about 7:00 PM this evening if needed. We want tonight's proceedings to be as civil and respectful as possible. Please do not make any personal attacks and please, no applause or outbursts during the meeting. The meeting will go a whole lot smoother if we're respectful to one another. To that end, I want to say a few words about decorum tonight and the rules that are in place for city council meetings. I believe everyone has received a handout of the rules, but if you haven't, here they are. There are no signs, props, posters, or banners allowed in the chamber, other than that which can be displayed on the overhead and our staff can help you do that. Items displayed on the overhead must be removed at the end of the public comment. Only the individual who the council president has called upon to provide public comment may stand at the podium. Multiple persons are not permitted to stand by the presenter, but if we call your name and you're next in line, we do ask you to come down and sit in one of our front seats so that we can get you queued up. A two-minute time limit for public comment is strictly enforced. Public comment must be directed to the city council through the president, not at our staff or members of the audience. There is no tolerance for disruptive public outburst. And the handicap landing at the right side of the dais has to be kept clear at all times, so please don't queue up there. The fire marshal is here tonight and they strictly enforce our rules regarding ingress and egress, so please pay attention to their directions. I will provide one warning to anyone who causes a disruption or breaks these rules tonight. Upon the second or continued disruption, the individual may be asked to leave the chambers and if necessary, security will be asked to escort you out of the chambers. Such removal from the council chambers could be effective for the remainder of the meeting. At this point, before we get started with proclamations and presentations, Counselor Borrego has a brief announcement or clarification for the agenda tonight.
Thank you, Mr. President. I understood that there was some confusion for some folks in my district regarding two changes that we have on our agenda. One is we have a public hearing regarding property that is in volcano cliffs and that is on Pasado del Norte and Kimic. And then we have a second, which is under the zoning conversion rules, which are under final actions, oh, 1989. And that is different from the public hearing. And so I just wanted to clarify that. And that is also in volcano cliffs. So I just wanted folks to know that there are two separate items that are being discussed tonight in that similar area. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. First up, we'll do proclamations and presentations. There are no proclamations tonight, but we do have a presentation from Christine Burner, our city economist, on our latest GRT report. Ms. Burner, welcome.
Good afternoon, members of council. Christine Burner, give you a quick update on GRT revenues and the employment report. You should have a front and back-sided handout in front of you. So for the January distribution, base GRT grew at about 3.4% over this time last year. This is essentially on par with the 3.5% that we're expecting for FY '20. When hold harmless distributions are excluded, growth was about 3.1%. The five-month cumulative growth is sitting at 8.4% over this time last year. Remember that that rather high five-month cumulative growth reflects some fluctuations in the hold harmless distribution, notably the September 6.8 million lump sum that we received due to amended tax returns. Accommodation and food services were quite strong at 6.8 for the month. Construction showed modest growth for about a half a percent, with the five-month cumulative average still quite strong at 11% for construction. Professional scientific and technical services was also quite strong at 9.8%. The food hold harmless is looking strong as well, but part of this is because taxation revenues stopped charging us administrative fees on that distribution. So briefly over to the other side, looking at the employment report. The December over-the-year employment for Albuquerque continued modest growth at about a half a percent or gaining 1,800 jobs. The unemployment rate for November was down to 4.3%, however, I don't have the December figure yet. That's due actually in a couple days from now. As we've seen over recent months, overall gains came from the private sector with growth at 1.4%. Professional and business services, up 2,400 jobs or nearly 4%. Leisure and hospitality, up 600 at 1.4%. Manufacturing and education and health, each added about 900 jobs at 5.6 and 1.3% growth respectively. And then mining and construction was up 1,000 jobs or 4.3%. This month, trade, transportation, and information, all lost jobs. Finally, the private sector was down 2,700 jobs or about 3.3%. Federal was up about 500, but state government was down 2,100 and local was down 1,100. And of course, the major sources of state and local jobs, remember, are in education, though the Labor Department doesn't keep individual accounts for Albuquerque. I could say a couple of words about coronavirus if you'd be interested just in... So I checked, you know, with Global Insights the other day and so far, they do believe that as of Friday, that the direct financial impacts were manageable. However, there is enough concern even over the weekend that they're going to have a teleconference this Wednesday morning, so I'll be paying attention to this. And this Friday morning is the quarterly meeting of economists throughout the state at UNM-Bieberin, so we'll be discussing the latest economic information and of course, I'll keep you up to date. And with that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, ma'am. Counselors, any questions? Counselor Borrego.
I saw last week where the market fell significantly. Is that reflected in your next report then? Or how that would...
Mr. President, members, counselor members... No, that isn't actually. And so, you know, that's part of the discussions that happened this Friday when we look at Bieber's most recent report of local data. And that's what that discussion will be about, sure.
Counselors, other questions? Ms. Burner, really quickly, I just want to acknowledge, I see that one of our biggest job sector growth was in the construction industry and I want to acknowledge, a number of our carpenters union members are here tonight. We're proud to see them working again and growing again, and so we appreciate your service and working here. I know you're here for another item later, but while you're here, we want to say thank you for bringing us new money. Also, Ms. Burner, I just wanted to ask, sort of, as we look at the cumulative growth, it's sort of, the stats are a little peaked a little bit because of that early distribution, but we had projected growth at about 3.5% in the budget. We're trending back closer to that, but do we have a real sense of, sort of, are we ahead of our projection? Are we going to land into the year on projection? Are we really doing better than we thought?
President Davis, we are on track to meet those projections. Everything so far has solidly where we projected. As you mentioned, construction growth, construction GRT, those are major factors in our model and those are still quite strong. So I've got no reason to really significantly change the forecast at this point.
Thank you. Counselors, other questions? Ms. Burner, thank you very much. Next up, a presentation from Mr. Ed Harness, our CPOA director, regarding their report for the fourth quarter of 2019. Mr. Harness, welcome back.
Good evening, Council President Davis, honorable counsel. I am Ed Harness, the Director of the, Executive Director of the Civilian Police Oversight Agency. For the quarter, the last quarter of 2019, October through December, we closed out a total of 36 investigations. You should have a handout coming. Of those investigations, 14 were administratively closed, two had a sustained finding, and 18 were unfounded. For that sustained finding, the discipline recommendation was dismissal of one officer and an eight-hour suspension for a supervisor. I've detailed the policies that were reviewed by the CPOA and the board. I won't bother to read those out to you individually. At the status conference in front of Judge Browning coming up on the 11th of February, the board and the CPOA are going to discuss three issues. There's the funding issue. This will be the first fiscal year for funding where we will not have the one-half of 1% that was written in the oversight budget originally. There will be a discussion of confidential drafts of the independent monitors report to allow the board to review those and not find itself subject to the Open Meetings Act or the Inspection of Public Records Act so that that document remains confidential, as it does for the parties. But it does not remain confidential for the board to be able to review the draft and make comments in that two- to three-week period of time prior to the IMR, the Independent Monitors Report, becoming a public document. The third issue that the board will be discussing is board member expectations and conduct. That's the third issue that will be addressed or spoken to Judge Browning about. I want to thank you for the two new board members you're going to appoint this evening and the reappointment of Dr. Cass. And the board is prepared to call a special meeting to consider the city's motion for sustained compliance and suspended monitoring. Depending on when the self-assessment plan is published by the city and has gone through the process of being vetted by the monitor, the Department of Justice will file its response. And if the board cannot coordinate that within the confines of their usual monthly meeting, then they are prepared to call a special meeting, much like they did for the use-of-force suite of policies to allow for public debate and public comment on that motion. And with that, I stand for questions.
Thank you, sir. Counselors, questions? Seeing that... Counselor Benton.
So not to put you on the spot, but how were you doing with that set aside funding as opposed to what you may or may not have as priorities?
Counselor President Davis, Counselor Benton, there has to be some real consideration regarding funding, regarding our mandate to investigate all complaints within 120-day period of time. During... The funding that we had was adequate for the staffing that we have at this point in time. I will be, I am requesting two additional investigator positions. That comes at a price tag of about $90,000 per investigator when you consider salary and benefits. But I think it needs to be considered in the context of the timelines that are required for an investigation. The collective bargaining agreement is being negotiated at this point in time and that's what controls. There is much research, I believe, that shows that a 90-day slash 120-day, if we get one extension, period of time is an impediment to fact-finding in these administrative investigations. Or we should consider whether or not it is efficient and whether or not our agency should be investigating every complaint that comes to our agency. Do, does the city want to spend that money? And I will use this as an example. Does the city want to spend that money to investigate whether or not an officer gave a sister of somebody being detained for mental health detention a pack of cigarettes? Is that, if the city wants us to investigate all of those things and the types of complaints that we get at this point, then the staffing will have to increase so that we meet the timeline. So I think that while we've had enough money under the one-half of 1%, that's at the current staffing level, but in order for us to be operationally compliant under the CASA, one of three things will have to change. We will have to increase staffing, we will have to increase the investigation timelines, or we will have to decrease the types of complaints that we have to investigate.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Harness. And just out of curiosity, as we move to budget, has the board or has your office already started a process of sort of determining what an adequate budget would be for each of those scenarios in terms of the sort of quantity or quality of investigations that are required of CPOA?
Counselor President Davis, yes. We're working with our analysts, putting together a work study to try and ferret out those numbers. In the most simplest of terms, when you examine the number of intakes that we've had for calendar year 2019 and you examine the staff that we have, essentially, our investigators can spend a total of two days on any investigation. So clearly, we have to prioritize the investigations that we do so that we can continue to have a meaningful right role in oversight.
Thank you, sir. Counselors, other questions? Thank you, sir. We appreciate your time. Oh, I'm sorry, Counselor Borrego.
So, Mr. Harness, what level are those two positions at that you're looking at for the future?
Counselor President Davis, Counselor Borrego, an investigator is brought on at an E-14 level, I'm sorry, E-16 level, step four.
Are they both the same?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Counselors, other questions? Hearing none. Thank you, Mr. Harness, and we look forward to seeing you. I think we're going to reach out and see how we can include you in our new Public Safety Committee as well so we can stay on top of some of your issues as well. Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Next up, we have economic development discussions of which there are none. Counselors, we're down to administration question and answers. Counselors, are there any questions for the administration? Counselor Gibson.
Thank you, Mr. President. My question is for the Director for Family and Community Services, Ms. Director Carol Pierce. Is she here? And I don't think I gave her a heads up for this, so we might be able to just save this for an email or a phone call. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Counselors, other questions? Seeing none. Mr. Ray, you're off the hook for a moment. Counselors, we'll move on to the Journal.
I'll move approval for the January 22nd Journal.
Any discussion, hearing none. All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
That item carries. Counselors, are there any changes to the letter of introduction? Counselor Benton. Pena and Borrego, whoever's on first.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the rules be suspended for the purpose of placing R-14 on tonight's agenda for final action. R-14 is renaming Bridge Boulevard within the Albuquerque city limits from Forest Street Southwest to the west side of the river, Avenida Dolores Huerta.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion, hearing none. All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
That item's unanimous. I move that the rules be suspended for the purpose of pulling EC-6 from the Finance and Government Operations Committee and referring to the Public Safety Committee. EC-6 is the report on the use of the 3/8 hold harmless tax. Do I have a second?
Second.
And a second, hearing a second. Any discussion, hearing none. All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
That item carries unanimously. I move that the rules be suspended for the purpose of pulling EC-487 out of the Finance and Government Operations Committee and referring it to the Public Safety Committee. EC-487 is transmitting the year-end status report of FY '19 priority objectives of APD. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion, hearing none. All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
And that item carries unanimously. Finally, I move that the rules be suspended for the purpose of pulling EC-526 out of FGO and referring it to the new Public Safety Committee. EC-526 is the mayor's recommendation of award to Porter Lee Corporation for Property Information Management and Lab Information Management Systems. Do I have a second? Hearing a second. Counselors, any discussion, hearing none. All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
That item carries. Counselor Gibson.
I'll move the approval for the letter of introduction.
All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
And we're on to reports of committees. Counselor Gibson.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Finance and Government Operations Committee met on Monday, January 27, 2020 and reports out the following items. In the matter of EC-527, 528, 529, 530, that receipt be noted. In the matter of EC-531, 535, 536, and 537, that they be approved. And in the matter of EC-533 and 534, that they be approved and be acted on at the meeting at which they are reported. In the matter of R-213 and O-88, that they do pass. In the matter of R-168, that it do pass as amended. In the matter of R-7, R-29, R-219 and R-220, that they do pass and be acted on at the meeting at which they are reported. I'll make a motion to accept the committee reports.
We have a motion and a second to accept the committee report. Hearing no discussion, all those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
And that item carries. Next up, deferrals and withdrawals. Counselors, any deferrals or withdrawals at this time? Counselor Harris?
Thank you, Mr. President. With regard to EC-436, it's not ready yet, so that's Tony Sanchez Drive Right-Away Vacation. Willowood Home Association requests vacation of public right-of-way for all portion of Tony Sanchez Drive, et cetera. I move a deferral until March 2nd.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
That item carries unanimously. Counselors, any other deferrals or withdrawals? And we are on to the consent agenda. Ms. Ortega, do we have a person signed up for public comment on the consent agenda items tonight? I'll just want one item. And counselors, while we're bringing that up, I'll make a motion to pull item S at the request of the administration and I'll ask them to come up and explain that amendment when we get there in just a minute. Counselors, any other requests to pull items from consent? Thank you, Ms. Ortega. Folks, tonight, we allow folks to make public comment on items that are on the consent agenda before the council votes on them. If you signed up for other items on the agenda, hang on, we're coming to you. First up is Ms. Colleen Acock, followed by Judy Young and Barbara Witt. As a reminder, when you see the yellow light comes on, it reminds you that you have 30 seconds. I know Ms. Acock knows this well and she could teach us all.
Thank you.
President Davis and counselors, my name is Colleen Acock and I'm here tonight to ask you to delay your vote on Luminarios, a high-density, low-income property. Why? Because if you approve this project, the public will see it as another city council boondoggle or cart before the horse ill-planned project. The executives of Luminarios are not going to tell you that they have checked off, they're going to tell you that they've checked off all the boxes. What they're not going to tell you is that their finances are not in order. They are not going to tell you that their intent to apply for the mortgage finance, with the Mortgage Finance Authority, will not be accepted until June 1. So they won't know if they get that one-plus million dollars for this project. And you can go on MFA website to find that out. Here's another financial problem. Can the executives prove to you that they'll be able to pay their lease and not leave the taxpayers on the hook when their lease goes from $2,000 a month after two years to $25,000 a month? What happens to the property when Luminarios can afford its lease in three years if that does so happen? Some counselors say this project provides roofs over heads, but citizens view those decisions as out of touch if those decisions happen outside of a district they're unfamiliar with. Do you know that a fence department in the next block has in excess of 100 vacancies available right now for rent to low-income seniors? These apartments can be filled, they can't be filled because of the high crime rate on Central, known as the rape, theft, and drug row capital. Building more apartments won't change that. It will only saturate the area against federal policy and judicial opinion. This past Friday, I sat in a courtroom where the jury returned a guilty verdict against a serial rapist on all counts from multiple victims of armed kidnapping and violent rape. Where did the rapist stalk his victims?
Ms. Acock, can you finish your, finish your thought there?
Thank you very much. These women came, they were stalked and raped from 2015 to the present because the rape test kits hadn't been tested until recently.
Ms. Acock, thank you for that. You can submit the rest of your comments to our staff and writing.
I did. You have the letter. These women came from this area where Luminarios plans to go.
Thank you. Next up, Ms. Judy Young, and following Ms. Young is Barbara Witt.
So, good evening, councilmen. This current project, the Luminarius project violates the 2008 East Gateway Metropolitan Redevelopment Plan boundary adopted by the City Council, the 2010 East Gateway Sector Development Plan adopted by the City Council, the 2013 Market Analysis of the East Central Revitalization Implementation, the 2014 Implementation of the Route 66 Action Plan adopted by City Council, the 2016 East Gateway MRA Plan Update encompassing 2008 and further expanding businesses, beautification, and safety. Not one of these documents recommends low-income residential in the historic east entrance corridor of Route 66 because low-income residential does not comply with MRA requirements and in fact violates these federal regulations for receiving such funds. The East Gateway Coalition and the Singing Arrow Neighborhood Association have directed me to come to this meeting tonight to tell you that they do not approve of this project. The July 16, 2019, meeting that Luminarius had for the community at Monzano Mesa Multi-Generational Center, there was overwhelming consensus at that meeting that opposed this project as well. So of all of these legal documents, as well as you can see with, this is the Route 66 National Trails Act that will be coming forth and bringing millions of dollars to revitalize the east entrance of Route 66. That historic National Trails, as well as the annual celebration in 2026 for the 100th anniversary of historic Route 66, that is also a federal bill. If this project comes in to what is a commercial area of revitalization, that will block both of those federal bills for revitalization.
Ms. Young, thank you for that and we have your other comments as well. Thank you. Next up is Ms. Barbara Witt and will follow by Ms. Geraldine Amato.
Good evening, President and counselors. I'm here to show support.
Would you speak into the mic just a little bit so we can hear you? Thanks.
Is that better?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
I'm here to show support for the Affordable Senior Housing Project, which is a 55-plus on the old Ponderosa RV Park. We have lived, my husband and I have lived at Central and Tranway for about 40 years, and this entire east-central corridor has been allowed to deteriorate with no attempt to revitalize it. Years ago, we went to a meeting, number of meetings, about all the wonderful things that were going to happen at that end of Albuquerque. The whole play on Route 66 to encourage pride in the area, a welcome visitor center. Nothing like this has happened to this area. What visitors do see when they come in from the east is panhandlers, homeless on every corner, shopping carts in the tents in the park. If you travel west on Central, you see vacant buildings with weed-filled lots. This area needs help, and we are not getting it. The old Ponderosa RV Park, on both sides of Central, just east of Eubank, has deteriorated for many, many years. Vandalism, the homeless have taken it over. If we can start one project in this area that would encourage others to follow, I feel we should do it. I have seen the Quattro Apartments on Fourth Street, which I am told is a sister project for the one they wish to build on the Ponderosa site, as in 55-plus. It is very nice, it is well-maintained, and I understand that that's the kind of project we will have for this area. The time is now to start revitalizing this area on Central. It has to start somewhere because the status quo is killing this area. One project will not turn the entire area around, but it is a start. One project can lead to others until commercial businesses and restaurants are comfortable coming into the area. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Amato, I'm going to bend the rules a little bit. I understand you signed up under general public comment, but wanted to speak on this, so we're going to let you speak tonight. I'm going to bend the rules a little bit to let you speak, but help me by following the rules on time.
You're letting people talk on, what do you call it, consent agenda items? That's not bending the rules.
Yes, ma'am.
If you pull it off the agenda and allow people to talk.
Ms. Amato, your time has begun. Go ahead.
I would like to make comments in general regarding the commercial projects of building things for senior communities, as well as, you know, they mentioned HUD and home funding. All these projects are commercial endeavors. The, how would you say, the professed purpose of them is not really what the real purpose is. And as we keep building buildings, which is acceptable to the current commercial order that we're under, the USUCC, we are using resources that the master overlords allow us to use for contracts, oh, commercial contracts. So the builders, it has to do with the builders. The stone which the builders rejected, I think of that scripture, will become the chief cornerstone. We have a Masonic Lodge here, a coast-to-coast Masonic Lodge, and whatever buildings can go up is fine, but the consequences thereof really is not very significant. And the people are suffering in this nation because the international banks are cartel has taken control of the wealth of this nation, and they divvy it up the way they please. The local people have no real choice on how the resources are spent. They have been confiscated from the people. We are given an illusion of having something to say about things that are being done, but they are really not. You know that public comment here is a ritual rather than a significant input in what's happening in this area. And unless there are enough people willing to resist what is happening, we will continue to see the deterioration of our social fabric, the economic breakdown of our ability to survive, and more and more homeless people despite the buildings that are going up. And I've met some very good people that are without houses and jobs. They're better people than some of the people that have jobs and wealth and cars and everything else.
Ms. Amato, thank you.
We are ignoring justice for the sake of the builders.
Ms. Amato, thank you for your comments.
No, you're welcome.
Counselors, that concludes public comment on our consent agenda items tonight. For individuals on tonight's consent agenda who are being appointed to serve on a board or commission, would you please stand up so we can recognize you? I know we have a long list of people who volunteered to serve on our city boards and commissions and are standing to be appointed tonight. Some of our new CPOA members and others. Thank you for being here.
Mr. President, I will move the approval of the consent agenda.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion and hearing none, all those in favor say yes? Next up, we have item S, which was pulled from the consent agenda at the request of the administration. I'm going to ask Mr. Real and maybe Mr. Padilla if you want to present to us quickly what this item is, and then I believe you have a proposed amendment, and I'll read it into the record once you have a chance to discuss it. Mr. Real?
Mr. President and members of the council, before you is the establishing the priorities for the 2021 Capital Improvement Plan, defining the criteria to be used in the rating of the projects and proposals, assigning weights to the criteria, allowing amounts for different purposes within the 2021 General Obligation Bond Program. This is the criteria that we will use as we move forward for setting up the capital program for the voters' approval in 2021. The amendment we are seeking to this legislation is an amendment that would provide a prioritization, if you will, for neighborhoods that have not been, that have historically been underrepresented or uprepresented in the process. We had this language in last year's, or two years ago, when we first did the capital program, it was approved by the voters here this past November, and we inadvertently did not include that, and we'd like to amend that language back into the bill.
Thank you, Mr. Real, and for purposes of discussion, I'll move item S for approval, and then I'll move amendment number one. Ms. Yara, would you read amendment number one into the record for us, please?
Yes, Mr. President. This is floor amendment one to R-19219. On page four, line two, after the word "projects," insert "in underserved neighborhoods as shown by the Opportunity Index map developed by the Office of Equity and Inclusion," as well as, and it would go on to say, "projects in qualified opportunity zones as identified by the U.S. Internal Revenue Service."
Thank you, Ms. Yara. I have a motion and a second for floor amendment number one. Any discussion on that item? Hearing none, all those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Thank you, and we're back on that item as amended. Counselors, any discussion on that item? Counselor Borrego.
And for the administration, under page two, section three, where it reads that 90% of the 2021 General Obligation Bond Program shall be for rehabilitation and deficiency correction in existing facilities and systems. How, so, I don't understand, I guess, and I'm trying to understand. So, is only 10% for new projects?
Madam President, let me have our capital improvements individual, Mark Matzko, who was in the audience, come and describe to you how that criteria was set up for your information.
Hi, good evening, Mr. President. Counselor Borrego, the criteria resolution sets a goal of 90% being for rehabilitation and renovation projects. Furthermore, that 55% of that 90% be just for rehabilitation projects. This is only a goal in the criteria resolution, so we want to keep what we have in the top working condition rather than bringing new facilities online and then having to pay the operation and maintenance of those facilities. So that's why that line is in the criteria resolution.
Take it. Counselor Borrego, any follow-up?
I'm trying to understand. So, again, is only 10% of that then for new projects?
Mr. President, Counselor Borrego, no, it's not just 10%, because it is a goal, it's not a shall. So, this past year, we didn't hit that 90%. We hit about 70%. So it is, it is just, again, it's just a goal for the criteria to be brought into the, into the process and for the decade plan to be approved. Again, again, it's just for the reduction of, not reduction, the lack of new general fund monies to bring online.
Counselor Borrego, any follow-up? Counselors, other questions? Mr. Matzko, thank you so much. Counselors, we're back on the item as amended. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of item S as amended say yes?
Yes.
And that item carries unanimously. We are going to move up one item on final action. It's item R-14, which renames Bridge to the Avenida Dolores Huerta, and I'm going to let the sponsors, Counselor Benton, Peña, and Borrego, take us from here. I believe, Counselor Peña, is that you?
Actually, this is in Counselor Benton's district, so I don't know. If you want to go ahead and get started, Counselor.
Thank you, Mr. President, and Counselor Peña and Borrego for cosponsoring this. We do have a lengthy list of people who would like to speak, but I'll go ahead and move the bill, moving it to pass for R-14, renaming Bridge Boulevard within the Albuquerque City limits from Fourth Street to the west side of the Rio Grande River, Avenida Dolores Huerta.
Second.
I move it to pass.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for Counselor Peña. You want to move to public comment? Folks, we're going to move on to public comment on this item. If you signed up for public comment, we're going to call your name. We'll have a minute and a half for you to come down and speak. Remember, when the light comes on, you have 30 seconds left, and you need not use all your time, though it's available for you. And we'll begin tonight with Diana Montoya, followed by Valerie St. John and Maya Tushka. If we call your name, come on down and take one of these seats in the front so that we can get you ready to go. Ms. Montoya, welcome.
President Davis and counselors, I first want to thank our champions, those of you who sponsored this resolution. Thank you very much. My name is Diana Montoya, and I'm a member of Las Mujeres, and I am also committee chair for this initiative, Avenida Dolores Huerta. I'm here on behalf of and in support of this initiative. This initiative, as most of you know, will connect Avenida Dolores Huerta with Avenida Cesar Chavez, making it the first in the nation to do so, and I think that's something we can be proud of. For over 38 years, our organization has worked on issues that impact women and their children, issues like education, employment, entrepreneurial opportunities, human rights, and civil engagement. We also recognize women who have made significant contributions to our community, to our state, and our nation. It's with that commitment that Las Mujeres put forth this initiative to honor Dolores Huerta, a leader who embodies not only our goals, but all that is good for social justice. So for the past two years, we've been meeting with alliances, neighborhood associations, we've been meeting with coalitions to gain their support, which we have. We've met with the Albuquerque Hispanic Chamber of Commerce and received their endorsement, one who spoke at, the president who spoke at the county commission, who couldn't be here tonight. We gained support from the National Hispanic Cultural Center. These are places, these are businesses and organizations that will be affected.
Thank you, Ms. Montoya, and thank you for being here. Valerie St. John, followed by Maya Tushka and Rosinda Nahar.
Council President Davis and city councilors, my name is Valerie St. John. I currently serve as one of three vice chairs on the Cesar Chavez Committee. Dolores Huerta is my cousin on my father's side. On behalf of my family, I would thank you and your office staff for all the work you have done on this proposed street name change covered by city council bill number R-2014. You know, Dolores is one of the few leaders whose work dates back to the era of Dr. Martin Luther King, Malcolm X, and Robert F. Kennedy. All these recognized champions of equality in our nation's great history. She is part of New Mexico history, and naming a street after her will preserve the memory alongside Cesar Chavez. I respectfully ask for your vote in favor of council bill R-2014, and thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Next up, Maya Tushka, followed by Rosinda Nahar and Chuy Martinez.
Good evening. My name is Maya Tushka, and I'm here to speak on behalf of my peers and my cousin Dolores Huerta. Last week, I asked my classmates if they knew who Dolores Huerta and Cesar Chavez are, and if they knew of the accomplishments they had made for the Latino community. Interestingly, 71% said they were aware of Cesar Chavez, where only 27% knew of Dolores, and 56% of all participants were completely unaware of their work, of the workers, of their workers' rights movement. Although Cesar Chavez is recognized by most, Dolores is wholly unloved, and what they fought for together is a distant memory. Today, in the hope of bringing that memory back to life, I am here to support the renaming of a portion of Bridge Boulevard to Avenida Dolores Huerta in order to bring awareness to this civil rights activist and honor her for everything she has done for the Latino farmworkers. Dolores helped to completely change the ways in which the farm worker, farmworkers lived. She has seen the ways in which their rights had been violated: little pay, grueling manual labor without breaks, poorly living conditions, and even sexual assault. She wanted to change this, and so her fight for the farmworkers alongside Cesar Chavez began. For instance, the Dolores Grape strike boycotts fought for collective bargaining, economic negotiations between employees and employers, which led to the 1975 California Agricultural Labor Relations Act. This gave farmers the ability to negotiate general workers' rights, such as improved working conditions and higher wages with landowners.
Thank you, ma'am. Next up, Mr. Rosinda Nahar.
President Davis, counselors, good evening. My name is Rosinda Nahar, president of Carpenter's Local 1319. Usually when we're down here, we're speaking in favor or against a project, but today, what brings us here today is history. You know, our local has been around in the States since 1899, so we're rich in history, and we love being part of history. And we believe that with the renaming of the street, that's what we are doing, is marking our footnote in the history of New Mexico. For our New Mexico native and idol, a great labor leader who we all truly believe in, you know, it's about time that we recognize her and being the first in the nation to do so on the year of her 90th birthday, while she's still alive, you know, it's great. Sometimes we recognize our labor leaders once they pass away unjustly, but I think us doing it while she's alive, first off and foremost, is great. So we're here in favor of this initiative, in support of it. Nothing really construction-based, unless you need help with the changing of the signs, Mr. Benton. We're more than willing to help you with that. We have a great volunteer committee that are more than willing to volunteer their weekends to help you with the changing of the signs. Well, thank you guys for doing this.
Folks, I know we have a lot of carpenters here that are proud to see Rosinda do that, and we appreciate your attendance. The rules don't let us do that, so we will, we will say, don't clap, but we're happy to let you wave or say, and hold your hand up later. Mr. Martinez will be followed by Adrian Carver and Ivan Olé. Ms. Martinez, welcome back.
Thank you, and good evening, President Davis and members of the council. My name is Chuy Martinez, and I am the co-founder of the Recuerde de Cesar Chavez Committee, as well as the Hispanic Heritage Committee, and a few others. I am here in support of Las Mujeres Initiative of naming the, the portion of Bridge and Fourth Street, I mean, yeah, the bridge and Fourth Street after Dolores Huerta. You know, I, many of you know that I grew up alongside Cesar Chavez and Dolores Huerta. They were probably one of the best mentors that I ever had in my life, and that's a passion that I carry on throughout my life, that I am still, you know, volunteering after, even after I retired. Am I already, oh, okay.
He started it.
So, this is a great opportunity, not just for our community, but for you. As elected members, we always look for an opportunity, elected members always looking for opportunities to add to their legacy. And this, supporting this project, supporting this, this bill, you will add your names to the legacy, and we hope that you will give us your support. Thank you, and we urge your support.
Thank you, Mr. Martinez. It's good to have you here, and thank you for sharing that story. Next up, Adrian Carver.
Mr. President, members of the council, my name is Adrian Carver. I am a proud ninth-generation New Mexican, and I know many of you, many of you might not know the side of my story, but I come from a long line of women who made it their lives' work to improve their community. My mom, Angie Gonzalez Carver, who you'll hear from soon, and Dolores Gonzalez, who you might recognize that name. As a Hispanic and mixed-race kid growing up in a working family on the edges of the International District, I can't tell you how much it meant to me to go to the zoo and see a school named after one of my family members. So I ask you to give other young people in Albuquerque the opportunity to see themselves, their history, the history of activism, their culture, and labor leaders reflected in the city by voting to rename Bridge Boulevard. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carver. Next up, Ivan Olé, followed by Sandra Richardson and Dennis Negret, I believe. Hey, that's really.
Good evening. Thank you for having me, Mr. President and council members. My name is Ivan Olé. I work for the University of New Mexico College Assistant Mic and Program. I work for the University of New Mexico College Assistant migrant program, high school and high school advocacy program, which serves students that come from an agricultural background, seasonal and migrant farmworkers. And so I'm here to support the name, the renaming of Bridge to Dolores Huerta Street, just to honor the many families that have worked in the, in the farms, in the fields that put food on our table. Dolores Huerta is a great role model for them, and just to acknowledge the great work that she's done, and to know that the work that our farmworkers here in New Mexico still continue to do would be awesome for you all to continue this. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next up, Ms. Sandra Richardson. Welcome. It's good to see you.
Well, I didn't expect to talk about this, but I'm so proud of being able to do it because this woman affected my life, even though I grew up in New Hampshire and was born in Rhode Island and studied about labor and so forth in Boston. And she doesn't know it, but she gave me the courage to help create a union out in Rio Rancho for children to benefit from it. So I didn't mean to talk about these things, these are personal, but I feel I'm shaking about it because I'm so happy. I'm happy to be here. I have more in common with her than I do with what I look like. And I, I remember how dangerous it was for her. Everybody talks about her now, but they didn't talk about in 1968 when she was facing shotguns, when they were boycotting the lettuce and so forth. I was in New Hampshire covering for my husband, who was in South Korea, and I was telling people, "Don't buy the lettuce, don't buy the grapes." And they looked at me like I was nuts, and I would tell people the story, and I was a very quiet person in those days. Not anymore.
Not anymore.
The people that are here from the carpenters' union, I benefited from that. My dad started off with that. His father started off with that. In my mother's family, all of them were union people.
That's okay. Finish your comment.
And, and then they became entrepreneurs and paid union wages. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson. Next up, Dennis Negret, followed by Geraldine Amato and Angie Gonzalez Carver.
Good afternoon, Mr. President and council members. My name is Denise Negrete, and I am here in representation of the Spanish National Honor Society and Mecha from the Trisco Heritage Academy. We are both group, a group of 150, about 150 high school students who have been participating in the Dolores Huerta Day of Service for the past two years. We would like to extend our support for the name change in honor of Dolores Huerta. This honor would not only support her work through the farmworkers' union and for migrant workers overall, but could also serve as a symbol for women as a whole. It is important that the work she has done through a lifetime dedicated to the service of others is not overshadowed by the stature of her male counterparts. As a group, we have participated in both the Elmo Kay March and the Cesar March, and are extremely grateful for the work of these great men. But we see the need to honor this amazing woman who has continued to impact us directly through the work, through her work in this city. This year, Dolores will be 90 years old, 90 years old, and continues to work diligently for the betterment of others. We have a unique opportunity to honor her in life, and we find it important to get this recognition completed diligently so she can be a part of it and continue to influence others through this process. We thank you for this time to share our support and hope these humble words will influence the council to push recognition forward. Thank you. Si se puede.
Ms. Negret, thank you. Ms. Negrete, thank you, and I apologize for missing your name earlier.
Don't worry.
Geraldine Amato.
Perhaps there's no harm to it, but I don't see it significantly honors anyone by naming capital projects after them. I'm reminded of the Masonic practice of naming buildings after people that are ritually assassinated, like Martin Luther King, before he passed, said he didn't want anything named after him. And he was ritually murdered according to a Masonic ritual, and that is never discussed publicly, as was other presidents whose names are placed on airports, et cetera. And locally, we have police officers that were ritually murdered according to Masonic rituals. Michael King, Phil Chacon, so they have substations named after them, and there's a few others. This is a practice of the secret brotherhoods. Why would you want to copy their practices in honoring someone that you care about? The legacy of these people have to be put into action, not merely put into a stationary building or a sidewalk or a street. That's not adequate. It has to be a spiritual revival to honor these people that you're really significantly trying to honor. People are going to forget who Dolores Huerta is when they drive down the street a couple of years from now, as many people forget who Phil Chacon was and Michael King.
Thank you, Ms. Amato. Next up, Ms. Angie Gonzalez Carver.
Thank you, President Davis and council members. I'm Angie Gonzalez Carver, president and co-founder of Las Mujeres. For over 38 years, Las Mujeres has been a nonprofit organization dedicated to the upward mobility of all women. We are very proud of the fact that we have given out over 300,000 scholarships to deserving women in our community. We are also proud of the fact that we take on social issues to help and uplift women. We are asking you to help us make history and let our voices be heard by renaming Bridge Boulevard Avenida de Dolores Huerta. This name change will not only be good for Albuquerque, but for the entire state and the nation. Avenida de Dolores Huerta will connect Avenida Cesar Chavez. It is appropriate for these two leaders, who work side by side for equality, human rights, and social justice, be honored with a connected avenue that bears their names. Dolores Huerta from Dawson, New Mex, is from Dawson, New Mexico, is, and is an American labor leader and civil rights activist with Cesar Chavez, who is co-founder of the National Farmer, Farm Workers Association, which later became the United Farm Workers. Huerta has received numerous awards for her community service and advocacy for workers, immigrants, and women's rights. At last year's legislature, there was a unanimous vote on both sides for declaring February 27th Dolores Huerta Day. Please help us give this amazing labor activist icon her place in New Mexico, her story, by naming her street Avenida de Dolores Huerta.
Thank you, Ms. Carver, Ms. Gonzalez Carver. Thanks, and thanks for the work you did with the county as well. I know you were a big part of that work. Next up, Tad Naminski, followed by Anna Maldonado and former state rep Idalia Lechugatena. Mr. Naminski.
You didn't call me in advance. Anyway, my name, Tad Naminski. I am opposed to changing names. Simple as that, changing names. And that is fame, legacy, dynasty of Clarisha Pena. What now, what she's doing, she allied with others, Benton and Borrego, well, before he was by herself, changing names. And, for example, Al Hurricane Jr., Jr., Johnny Tapia, Ken Sanchez, don't forget that, how quickly. Maybe his legacy is how he died. We can, we can learn too. Well, here, Dolores Horieta, what he has to do with New Mexico. He lived from age 10 organizing union in California, farmers' union. Why don't you put her statue in California, not here, in New Mexico? She is born into Mexican immigrant. Oh, well, isn't that Mexican agenda? It is racial? Oh, I am racist? No, it is racial right here, because there's so many people lived in the South Valley.
Mr. Naminski, your time is up. Next up, Anna Maldonado.
Hello, President Davis and city councilors. Thank you for having me. My name is Anna Maldonado, and I've had the great honor and opportunity to organize the annual Dolores Huerta Day of Service. I've also had the opportunity to meet her and also learn a lot about her history and what she's done to help farmworkers. Dolores Huerta began her advocacy work as a teacher when she witnessed students coming to her class hungry and wearing no shoes. And those student, those students were actually children of the migrant farmworkers that she spent, she dedicated many, many years to support, and she continues to do her work helping, helping the poor, helping underprivileged people in California. She's not only helped people there, but she's made a difference in supporting unions and other workers across the nation, and she's been honored by President Obama as well. And I, I'm here today to support the changing of Bridge Boulevard to Avenida de Dolores Huerta. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Former state rep Idalia Lechugatena, followed by Sophia Sanchez, Pearl Le King, and Anselmo Carbajal. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. President, honorable members of the city council. My name is Idalia Lechugatena. I am a, I was the first naturalized female from Mexico to serve in the New Mexico Legislature in the history of this great state. I'm also an international ambassador. I represent the United States for the Global Embassy for Peace, but I'm also an immigrant and a farmer and rancher. My ranches are in Mexico, but that counts too. Today, I'm representing the Hispanic Heritage Committee. On behalf of the Hispanic Heritage Committee, we would like to express our support for this initiative. Our mission is to preserve and, and honor our Hispanic culture in the state of New Mexico. So on behalf of that committee, I, we want to express our full support and also the, thank the, the city council for your service and also Las Mujeres for their, for their hard work on this. Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council.
Thank you, ma'am. Next up, Ms. Sophia Sanchez, followed by Pearl Le King. Welcome.
Hi. I'm here to read a statement on behalf of Congresswoman Deb Haaland. Dear Albuquerque City Council, I thank you for giving me an opportunity to voice my support for the renaming of one of our streets to Avenida de Dolores Huerta. By renaming one of our busiest thoroughfares in the city to, after her, we will give residents and visitors alike an opportunity to be reminded of one of our country's most important public figures and to elevate the name of a Hispanic woman who came of an age and time when our country needed a champion for the marginalized and unrepresented among us. As we all know, Dolores is a New Mexican by birth. She was born in Dawson, New Mexico, and her father was in New Mexico State Legislature. By this fact alone, we all have a sense of pride in her and in, in her life's work, which is to say that she is more than worthy of an honor such as this. Her incredible mark on history, made by her wit, humor, creativity, amazing power, and organizing people, will remain forever. I wholeheartedly support this effort and thank Las Mujeres and the many other organizations involved to getting this done. Sincerely, Deb Haaland, U.S. Representative.
Ms. Sanchez, thank you for coming to deliver that message. Next up, Ms. Pearl Le King, followed by Anselmo Carbajal. Going once, going twice, Pearl Le King. Hearing none, Anselmo Carbajal. Hearing none. That concludes public comment. So we are back to the sponsors. Counselor Benton.
Thank you, councilors, and thank you to all who spoke this evening. I wanted to just remind the public some of the accomplishments of Dolores Huerta. She received the, and these were all at a national level, the Eugene V. Debs Foundation Outstanding American Award, the U.S. Presidential Eleanor Award, Eleanor Roosevelt Award for Human Rights, the Presidential Medal of Freedom. And just keeping in mind, not that long ago, we dedicated the Ben E. Keith Byway on the West Side. So I don't think that, you know, it's, it's racial at all. I think it's that we recognize people who are, are important to the history of New Mexico. And what a greater privilege than to her co, her, her, the person who she collaborated with most, Cesar Chavez, there's an intersection, now the two roads intersect, the Avenida Cesar Chavez and Avenida de Dolores Huerta. So it seems highly appropriate to me. And then down the street, we have Martin Luther King Jr., and throughout our city, we have people that were local, national figures, and I think this just solidifies the history of New Mexico. So I'm proud to support this.
Thank you, Counselor Borrego. Counselor Pena.
Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, I want to thank Las Mujeres. You know, we started on this journey a few years back, and I kind of overstepped my boundaries by supporting it and working along with you, and this was in Counselor Benton's district. So, you know, I graciously asked for, you know, his support as well, and obviously, it's something that he, he supports. But, you know, I want to thank Diana Cora, Angie, all of you guys who have, who have been doing this. You know, I was honored to support it. I know you worked with the county commission and Commissioner Casada, and they were able to get their portion of it completed already with their support. So, you know, with Dolores Huerta, you know, with some of the comments that were being made, before I get started on those, I just want to say, before Counselor Sanchez's passing, he supported this effort as well. So, you know, Dolores Huerta, she actually, she's the one that coined the term si se puede, right? Everyone thinks that it was Cesar Chavez, but it was actually her. And then President Obama later used it, and he joked with her that he stole it or borrowed it, you know? So when we're talking about supporting people who are native New Mexicans, you know, we have a lot of people in our community to be proud of for their accomplishments, not only here in New Mexico, but throughout the United States. And for me, as Chicana, Latina, Mexicana, whatever you want to call me, you know, I'm, I'm truly blessed to be able to name and proud to support our history and culture by naming public places after our local heroes like Al Hurricane, Johnny Tapia, Ken Sanchez, and now I'm very honored to name this first intersect in the United States after Dolores Huerta. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Wilson. Counselors, other comments? Counselor Avazan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I need some clarification just because, is it going to be, so we have Avenida Cesar Chavez, and then we have, we're going to have the changes that are going to be made, but are we still keeping part of this bridge?
Counselor Benton.
Yeah, the, the segment that goes through the county from, from Isleta Boulevard out to Old Coors, and then probably beyond, which has actually become city again for a point there, because there's so many properties there that would require an address change, that segment is going to be called, I believe we're talking about calling it the Dolores Huerta Byway or Highway, along with the bridge would still be the address on people's business addresses. But for the segment east of Isleta, it will be over to Fourth Street. It's already in the county, Dolores Huerta, Avenida de Dolores Huerta, over to the river, and there's this one little segment left in the city, so it will be connecting that.
Thank you. Mr. President, I just, so that did help because I was wanting to make sure that we weren't going from having a break in there, going back to Bridge and then back to Avenida. Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselors, other questions? I just want to say, Counselor Benton, before you close, I appreciate very much the councilors working on this and working with the county. This is an important piece, as someone mentioned, as Rosinda mentioned, like, this is about our history. And the further removed we come from it, sometimes it's easy for us to forget those people who laid that path, and no matter where we came from, I think it's incredibly important that that road, that place, has been a crossroads for a lot of folks, and I think it's very fitting. And so commend you all for taking up this lead, and Counselor Benton to close.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, the intersection of Fourth Street and Bridge is a historic intersection in Albuquerque. It was part of Route 66 for a long time. It's still Borellos's main street, and this is where, that's the place where the annual march and celebration begins every year historically at the National Hispanic Cultural Center. So it's really apropos that we name this, it's really a short segment that's within the city in this part of it, but rename it, to name it after our native daughter, Dolores Huerta. And I do want to thank also Las Mujeres and the Recuerda Cesar Chavez Commemorative Committee, County Public Works, and the city DMD and Planning Department all worked well together to. to, to make this happen. And so I want to thank them as well. But, but yeah, to me, and also just before I forget, remind everyone, March 28th is the celebration this year, so come on out, 10, 10 o'clock, the, the march begins, and then a whole day of celebration after that. So please come out to the Hispanic Cultural Center, and we'll start the march from there. But yeah, I think most important is that Dolores Huerta and, and Cesar Chavez and the Farm Workers Union really represent the finest example of the right to organize and the right for labor to organize. And sometimes, like in this case, to represent the, the people who are perceived to be the most, the least powerful, you know, farmworkers and, and migrant workers in the fields in, in California and in the Southwest. So it's something I'm very proud to just be a small part to, to help this happen. But I'd urge your support and just want to say "si se puede".
Thanks. Well, just a second. Almost done. Almost to that part. Counselors, any other comments? Counselor Benton to close, you've closed already. Counselors, we have a motion on the floor for the motion to approve. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed? That item carries unanimously. Congratulations, councilors. We are going to move on. While our folks are moving out here, we're going to move on to our next segment, which is general public comment. About half our audience is leaving for this, and the other half is waiting for the next item. So we're going to give these folks just a minute to clear out. As a reminder, there will be a minute and a half time limit tonight on public comment. The light on the podium will be green for the first minute, and then the light will turn yellow and the bell will ring indicating that you have 30 seconds remaining to wrap up your comments. At a minute and a half, the light will turn red and indicate that your time is up. First up, we have Gerald Inomoto, followed by Don Schrader, and then we're going to get into folks, I think, who all want to talk about the New Mexico United and their upcoming season issues. What's up?
Don Schrader was performing.
Okay. Well, he's on my list, so you're on my list if you want to go now. We'll go and take you, then we'll take Don. We'll take you now if you want, and then we'll take Don.
I care, but he might care.
Come on, come on, Miss Inomoto, we'll take you one more time. Come on, we'll take you.
Don't you want to go first?
Come on, Don. Somebody go first. Welcome back.
Trump's racist white supremacy, Trump's cruel separation of thousands of immigrant children from their parents, Trump's denial of the climate crisis, Trump's threat in 2017 to mass murder the 25 million people of North Korea, Trump's sexual assaults on women, Trump's attacking news media as the enemy of the people, Trump's thousands of lies and insults, Trump's insane addiction to nuclear bombs, Trump's America First worship of power and money, Trump's withdrawal from the Iran nuclear deal, Trump's siding with Israel against the Palestinians, Trump's support for bloody dictators. These evils are far worse than what Trump was impeached for. Presidents George Washington and Thomas Jefferson bought, sold, enslaved human beings. Sadly, the U.S. Constitution has always ignored and allowed massive evils of the U.S. presidents.
Next up, Miss Inomoto.
I think it's pretty tinsy of you to cut the time back to 1:30. Two minutes is hardly enough to say anything. We are not a constitutional republic, as double-talking Bar Association-controlled operatives like double-cross Christian J. Sekulow declares. The British pension bar dynamic would not control the legal judicial network. Police would not be ranked military style. The federal DEA's Hitta designations are a glaring example of how the crux of the corruption we endure here is invisible, because the Albuquerque Journal's owners and editors cover and support criminal, criminal operations within government. Federal DEA's Hitta is the crux of the corruption we're facing. Drug money laundering is a significant part of many prominent businesses' cash flow, out in the open but invisible to most of us because it's not declared from the Albuquerque Journal. The front page story about Raleigh Bruvald, about a child rapist, case in point. Bruvald tried to get the authorities to stop child pornography trafficking in his North Valley neighborhood back in the 1990s. He did not understand that what he was threatening was a criminal enterprise of trafficking of children for pornography. And when they told him to back off or else they would get his children to say he molested them, he didn't believe it. He's been doing time in prison since the middle of the 1990s, despite what the Albuquerque Journal lies about on the front page.
Thank you, Miss Inomoto. Next up, we have a series of folks that are scheduled to speak about the New Mexico United. Mr. Carl, you're first up, but I'm going to ask, Mr. Trevasani is also scheduled, and I think he has an announcement that'll relate to your point. Would you be okay if we take him first? Mr. Trevasani, you want to join us? Sure.
Thank you, President Davis and Councilman IMP. Trevasani, I'm the owner and CEO of New Mexico United. And I know there's a lot of people here that want to talk about an issue, and as does Mr. Real. And so I think what I would, rather than talk about the experience of New Mexico United, I think what I'd like to offer is just this, that, one, I would like to make sure everybody understands that without the support of the city and this council and the mayor, and particularly this man Lawrence Real, Mr. Real, we would not have New Mexico United here, that we didn't have a stadium, and he fought for us to have a place to play before we ever kicked the first ball. So without that support, it could never happen. The other thing that would also make this impossible is without the support of the people who are going to speak next, the supporters. And I think I can say with almost absolute certainty that many of them a year ago today did not know each other, but they've come together as a family. They've come together, yes, for soccer, but I think more importantly, to show their belief in the city, belief in the state, and their belief in each other. And I think you're going to see that passion today as we talk about the issue of, of the netting at Isotope Parks. So I'll leave it to, to them to, to speak about that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Trevasani. Mr. Real, we normally don't do this, but I understand that you've been working with the United to address the issues that they've been coming up with, that they, they're going to raise tonight. Would you tell us a little bit about the administration's solution to the question about netting at the Isotope Stadium ahead of the United season?
Mr. President and members of the council, for some time, we have been talking about the requirement by the National Baseball Association or League to require netting at, at AAA baseball parks across the country. During the discussions that we had some months ago related to the lodgers tax fund, money was allocated through your work and the mayor's office to allocate some funds to make some improvements to Isotope's Park. Part of the improvements included putting in the netting that is required now along the first baseline and third baseline of the park so that, for the safety of the spectators at a baseball game. Part of that review has been, been, or that work has been done by the Department of Municipal Development. Several weeks ago, we announced that we had secured the netting and that the netting would be going up as part of a contract so that we would meet the requirements for AAA baseball. In that conversation, we also agreed that we would look at how we might make that netting or set the netting up so that we could remove the netting and/or retract the netting in some fashion so that United New Mexico fans could also enjoy the, the event, simply because Mr. Trevasani and, and his leadership have been talking about wanting to ensure that there is the excitement and the fun that we support with United New Mexico and the use of the, of the park. So we have, we have a contractor on board that is reviewing that netting as we speak, and will be providing the city with some options very, within the next week or so to create a process by where we can raise, raise the net up or down and/or take it out completely so that we can, when every time there's a field conversion for soccer, that the netting would be taken down so that United fans can actually enjoy the game. And then when we are having baseball, we would put, secure the nets again so that we would protect our spectators watching baseball. All of that is still a work in progress, but the good news with all the conversations that's been occurring, Mr. Trevasani has stepped up and said that the United would be willing to work with us on a cost sharing so that whenever that netting has to be taken up or taken down, that we would work together to ensure that we could absorb the costs of that endeavor. So in, in short, we're working on that, and we hope to get that information put together and, and resolve this issue once and for all.
Thank you, Mr. Real. Counselors, other questions on this item before we go to public comment? So we'll come back to Mr. Carl. Welcome back. Next up will also be William Anthony and Carlos Tenorio. So again, if we call your name, come on down front, take one of these seats and be ready. Mr. David Carl, welcome.
Thank you. My name is David Carl. I am fortunate enough to be the president of these crazy people behind me. We're the Curse, we're the wild and crazy folks behind the goal at the New Mexico United matches. Here to talk to you about the netting, as we said before. We started with six people when we started this group, hoping we would have 50 by the end of year one. We had 550 by the end of year one, and we're on pace to crush that again this year. It's been exciting, and I encourage you all to come out to a match. I know Council President Davis has been out, Mayor Keller's been out to several, and I want to thank you all for your help and participation along the way throughout this entire process. When you do come out, you'll see a bunch of people so proud of the city and so proud of the state. For the first 5:05, five minutes and five seconds of every match, Peter Trevasani comes out into the stands, into our supporter section with the crazy people. And he brings, he stands there with local celebrities. The mayor's been out there. Holly Holm has been out there. People who are proud to be New Mexicans, they come out and they cheer for the first 5:05 with us. When you get to 19:12 on the clock, the entire stadium goes wild. That's when our state was founded. We go wild until 2018, when our club was founded. Please come out here, be a part of it. This is so important. Kids come down every single match after the match, and they meet players. When players score, they jump into the stands, they hug fans. This is something like we haven't seen in New Mexico before. The, the city's been pushing to start bragging. We brag about this. We're so proud of this. We're so proud of this city, this club, this state. Nets getting in the way would really put a temper on that. We need this, we need this retractable netting. Thank you to Mr. Real. Thank you to the city for working with us on this. We love, we love the city, we love the state. Somos Unidos.
Thank you, Mr. Carl. Next up, Mr. William Anthony.
Hello, Counselor President Davis and councilmembers. So one of the things I want to speak of more to this is not just the soccer aspect of it. I actually grew up playing baseball, understand the safety of the netting because I've been hit by foul balls, I've hit people with foul balls, it's, and it needs to be there. But the biggest thing that we also want with retractable netting is the fact that, A, we can enjoy the game, we can be passionate. Like, like you said, I didn't meet any of these people before, and now they're family, we're hanging out all the time. We're, this, it's, I'm so proud of my state, I'm a first-generation New Mexican, I love this. Another part is, is I believe we, as a state and a city, invested nearly a quarter, three quarters of a million dollars into making Isotope's Park more concert accessible. Who's going to watch a concert with nets in the way? So beyond just the soccer, the baseball, you want to be able to, and just enjoy the atmosphere. With the retractable netting being there, it allows the concerts to happen the way they should be, so people don't have to change venues or anything like that. We can enjoy the soccer match the way that we want to, and then baseball, everyone can be there safely. So thank you for listening to us on all this, and thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Carlos Tenorio, followed by Lindsay Allen and Wesley Torres.
Do you mind if I put a picture here so you guys can see? I'm, I'm talking on behalf of my son.
Sure, our staff will share that.
Okay. Good evening, distinguished members of the Albuquerque City Council. My name is Carlos Tenorio, Sr. Tonight, I am speaking on behalf of my son, as you can see, Carlos Tenorio II. You may know him as Sombrero Man. He's a huge supporter of all sports clubs here in Albuquerque and around New Mexico. Today, like many of the people I am with, I want to talk to you about the net issue at Isotope's Park. Now, before I touch on the subject, I just want to say I have played baseball my entire life, and I am a huge fan of America's pastime. Nets need to be installed for fan safety, and that is a fact. But what we are voicing is that there is another way. We need to consider retractable nets. Now, being a fan of Oakland sports, I have dealt with the retractable net issue my entire life, as both Major League Baseball's Oakland Athletics, as well as NFL's Raiders, shared the Coliseum. The Coliseum is one of the Bay Area's largest venues, holding up to 68,000 people. So naturally, other events will come. The city of Oakland and Alameda County knew this, so they installed retractable netting. They are without, they are out, up to the Athletics. They're out for the baseball games and down for the football games. So this, we feel, can be done at Isotope's Park. This is bigger than baseball. This is about family, about interacting with one another. As you saw in the picture, my son has been front row in the Curse section for every match. He interacts with every player. They know him, he knows them. Don't take this away from the kids.
Thank you. Next up, Lindsay Allen, followed by Wesley Torres and Camila Feibleman.
Thank you, President Davis and fellow councilmen and women. Thank you for your time and your service to our great city. My name is Lindsay Allen, and I'm here today to address the new netting being installed at Isotope's Park. As an avid sports fan, I understand and agree why this netting is necessary. It is a safety concern. As a young child, I almost got hit by a foul ball at a Dukes game. So I understand the safety concerns. I'm not denying the safety concerns, but I am voicing my concern that the interaction with the fans would drastically change for both players and for the fans. I myself have brought my nephews, seven and six now, two games, and they have gotten autographs, gotten to hug fans, and it's pushed them further in their own sporting endeavors themselves, taking on two additional sports, soccer and baseball, to continue as young youth as the New Mexico United players have served as examples to them. I am concerned with all options not being explored yet, as Mr. Real has mentioned that this is being explored, and I'm greatly happy to hear that. These nets would drastically change again the fans' experience at the United's games and players' connections. I respectfully ask you to explore all options, including retractable netting, to be installed. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Next up, Wesley Torres, Camila Feibleman, and Rachel Johnson.
Good evening, Mr. President and other councilmembers. My name is Wesley Torres. I am a second-year season ticket holder and Curse member for United. I'm not, I'm not going to sit here and talk about the netting. We all know why it's important. What I want to bring to your attention is an experience that I had there with my little cousin. I took him for his birthday. At the end of the match, he was able to get pictures and autographs from all the players. And when I took him home, his parents asked how it was, and the first thing he said was the best birthday ever. Permanent netting will take away from this type of interaction. I think it's very important to, as the United team grows. If you've never been to a game, I highly recommend going. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, sir. Next up, Ms. Camila Feibleman. Welcome. I did not expect you to be here for this item.
Somos Unidos. But that's not what I'm here to talk about today. I'm the director of the Rio Grande Chapter of the Sierra Club. We represent over 5,000 members in the Albuquerque metro area, and I'm here to speak on support of moving to the 2018 building codes. I served on the Albuquerque Code Change Committee, and we saw a technical report that basically showed us that going to 2018 is sort of cleaning up 2015. We're on 2009. 2018 is the place to go. There'll be new codes in 2021. I want to hearken back to when we were a regional and national leader on building codes. Albuquerque had made its own codes, and those were removed by a previous administration. We're talking about being able to save 23% energy costs on commercial buildings and 27% on residential. So for a family like ours, where we're paying preschool bills and everything else, being able to save some money on our home energy costs is something that's really important to us, and I think important to New Mexico families, especially people who are buying new homes, have an opportunity to gain these savings year by year on their electrical bills. And I think that that's important in light of the changing climate that we're seeing and experiencing. And as a mother of a three-year-old and a stepmother of a seven-year-old, it's important to us. So 2018, and Somos Unidos.
Thank you, ma'am. Next was Rachel Johnson and Daylon Johnson, and followed by Art Tannenbaum.
Hello, my name is Robin Vega. I'll be speaking on behalf of the Johnson family. I'll start with Daylon Johnson. My name is Daylon Johnson, and I'm a second grader at Matheson Elementary. I really want other people, especially kids, to be safe, so I think nets are a good idea. But I disagree with nets, that you can't move out of the way sometimes, because no one would ever be able to get hugs or autographs, high fives from the players, and that is my favorite part of the game. Plus, if the nets were in the way, I would have never met the governor, and now she is my friend, and asks me to please not run against her someday. I hope that all the grownups make the right choice that makes everyone safe and happy. And now Rachel's statement. And now Rachel's statement. My name is Rachel Johnson, and I am a registered nurse. In my career, I have seen many injuries, so safety for everyone is always at the forefront of my thoughts. And my job focuses on compliance and regulations, so I also understand the need for meeting the requirements set forth by the league. But I'm also a taxpayer, a concert goer, a soccer fan, and an attendee of community events, and I know there is a collaborative solution for the nets at Isotope Park. Retractable nets will provide the safety needed for the baseball games, as well as be able to be taken down when needed for other events. Besides the soccer match atmosphere being absolutely ruined by a net barrier, the city recently invested a large sum in upgrades to the park for concerts, and I can tell you, I will take my money elsewhere if I'd have to attend those behind a net. Since the team will pay for the difference in cost for retractable nets, as well as labor when they need to be moved from soccer matches, this is a win-win.
Thanks for that.
Thank you.
Next up, Art Tannenbaum, followed by Athena Kristendulu. She's here somewhere. Mr. Tannenbaum, welcome back.
I haven't been down here since your reckless stunt several months ago, which included a recipe for disaster, which was widely publicized. Lord have mercy, city buses are killing pedestrians in this town. I stopped by the downtown Albuquerque office of one of my United States senators today. I asked if the senator was aware of the fact that people were getting hit and killed by city buses in this town. The answer I got was yes, but then there was some plausible deniability added. "It's been in the news," was added. I don't know how a pedestrian can roll into a bus-only lane. The city of Albuquerque government spokesman told the news media and the public that the dead woman who got hit by the art bus was drunk. I don't know how that could be determined so quickly on the scene. Not only was she drunk, she was reportedly belligerent. I guess she got what she had coming to her. Now, the man who got hit by the art bus on Central Avenue in the university area the following day, he was jaywalking. It's federally funded homicide. That's what it amounts to.
Thank you, Mr. Tannenbaum. Next up, Athena Kristendulu, followed by Ward McCartney and Tad Naminsky. If we call your name, come on down.
President Davis, councilors, I have grumpy neighbors. I am Athena Kristendulu, new president of the District Four Coalition of Neighborhood Associations. Unlike any relationship, trust takes time to be established, but can crumble in a few poor, possibly criminal actions, resulting in grumpy neighbors. I'm referring to various development projects in various stages of approval, and if any, sound like any on the table tonight is purely accidental. In particular, I bring to your attention the instance of clear conflict in rules resulting in the approval of a 24/7, 365-day gas station, we don't need any more of those anyways, convenience store being located next to residences despite neighborhood opposition and clear requirement to prohibit non-residential activity between the hours of 8:00 p.m. and 6:00 a.m. Other instances of conflict include ignoring neighborhood density protections in the IDO, seemingly on a whim, and green tagging work clearly not up to code. And these are just a few District Four issues resulting in grumpy neighbors. We're now grumpy and do not trust our city planners, zoners, zoning, and inspectors. They work for us, the taxpayers, not the development and contractors. And while I'm at it, I'm going to ask you to go ahead and pass the 2018 code for energy code, just because that's who I am. Thank you very much. We'll be following up on all these.
Next up, Ward McCartney and Tad Naminsky. Mr. Ward McCartney.
President Davis, council. I was a builder for 25 years in Montana, and I took the courses and built homes and additions and remodels to the COOPS Super Good Sense standards. Those were R28 walls, R50 ceilings, putting in a fresh air heat exchanger, which cut energy efficiency use in half, heating bills. And the COOPS would refund part of the cost of that. But I wanted to emphasize much that a larger proportion of lower-income families' earnings goes towards utilities. It's very important to require higher efficiency building codes, especially to address the cost of utilities of rental and multiplex structures. This results in lower-income families having a greater disposable income. Increasing energy codes is the road to addressing the injustice in the state of New Mexico and addressing the looming climate catastrophe. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Naminsky.
Thank you. My name is Tad Naminsky. Well, let's talk about legacy dynasty tycoons. Rio State, bar brokers, I mean liquor, large net brokers, et cetera, et cetera. No, I'm going to say first, for next meaning. Be prepared. Albuquerque High School. Well, I have many, many friends graduate from Albuquerque High School. There are also, for example, very powerful Springer Building, Springer Attorney, George Melo, also very, well, everybody knows in Albuquerque, who I'm talking, George Melo. So, anyway, here is diversity, what I'm talking. Do we have diversity? No. You guys creating races right here. Yes, you are racist. Well, I'm talking about racism. I just only explain it to you all, council of Albuquerque. Now, oh, well, lawyers, judges, state body association, Albuquerque Body Association. Well, I'm running out of time. We'll talk, council, council of North Harris.
Thank you. Next up, Patrick Atencio, we followed by Richard Barish and Dan Regan.
All right, I'm Pat Atencio, and, well, I bring up stuff when I see police doing the wrong thing, and I found another one at Walmart last week, parking in the fire zone. So I told them he should move, and he said, oh, no, he has a right to because it's, he's an emergency vehicle, but he's not doing no emergency stuff, he's just there on a side job doing theft protection. And today, I went over there, and he's just parked right in front of a no parking sign right in the fire zone. I mean, are these police above the law? Why do we have the JOC over here overseeing them if they don't oversee them? And why do you guys allow it? And then I seen a fire truck drive right by him, and I asked the fire truck driver why he didn't do anything, and he said, well, is it a fire zone or isn't it? And he said, the fire zone goes to the building, and that car shouldn't be there, but they looked the other way. Why is this? We not just have corrupt police, now we have corrupt fire department? So, when are we going to change? When is the judicial oversight going to be worth having? You know, when are they going to have teeth to take these people out? And I'm for changing half of Martin Luther King into Rosa Parks Drive, too. I mean, women have a say, too, in this. Thank you. Bye.
Thank you. Mr. Barish, welcome back.
Thank you. President Davis and councilors, I am here today to urge your support for R19210, which will be a step toward adoption of the 2018 energy building codes. I think that all of us at this point in time have begun to see what the effects of climate change are going to be. There are going to be disruptions in our food supply, there will be disruptions in food production, people will be displaced from their homes. It is an urgent problem, and we need to be taking steps to address climate change on every level of government. This is something that we can do here on the local level to begin to address in some small way the effects of climate change, mitigate those effects in the future. We know that if these are adopted, there will be approximately a 25% reduction in the carbon footprint of new construction, and I strongly urge council to adopt this resolution to begin on the path toward adopting the 2018 building codes. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next up, Mr. Dan Regan, followed by Jeremy Harmio and Xavier Obando.
I didn't get the memo that the time limit had changed. I got two minutes here prepared. I'll try to get through as much as I can.
We can take your comments in writing, as you know as well, so that's fine. Give us what, give us your best piece.
You have, but I haven't heard back from anybody. President Davis and councilors, I'm Dan Regan, District Four Coalition. Knowingly or unknowingly, the city of Albuquerque is running a shakedown racket with its implementation of the IDO. The planning department has no requirement on any of its project applications that the applicant attest to the truthfulness of the information in the application. The planning department does not have an application analysis protocol, which requires the planners to verify the veracity of the information in the applications. The ZHE can ignore four verifiable evidentiary statements presented to it, both in writing and the actual hearing, and then can quote the misrepresentation of the truth in its own approval nods. Senior staff within this planning department can ignore for two-plus months requests for information and clarity when the IDO says that they should respond within seven days. And if a neighborhood association or coalition want to point out the total lack of accountability in this entire fiasco of a process, it's going to cost you a minimum of $130 for to file an appeal, and much more if it goes to court because you got to pay for an attorney. It is extortion to run such an unaccountable system and force NAs and coalitions to either shut up about the incompetence or start farcing over money to remedy such a travesty of administration. To top it all off, the Office of Inspector General of the city will not, quote, "will not become involved in this or any other zoning issues."
Thank you, Mr. Regan. Next up, Jeremy Harmio, followed by Xavier Obando.
Hello, and thank you for this opportunity. I thought I'd go ahead and tie tonight in because I'm actually really honored to be here tonight when you guys have approved the intersection between Abeneda Cesar Chavez and DeLora Suerta. I'm going to have to go home and tell my mom about that. And that brings up a different intersection for me because of the fact that she really instilled in me this concept of community and how sports can be joined with community action, social justice, and movements. And I think that the place where the nets will go up are another intersection, perhaps not as honorable, perhaps not as historic as DeLora Suerta herself, of course not, but being a part of this soccer community, growing up at St. Pius, doing well there in sports, but also being encouraged to do something more than the sport, doing something with our community, volunteering, et cetera, that's how I got into nonprofit. And in fact, I've never been in these chambers before without supporting some kind of cause or nonprofit issue. Today, I'm here talking about this intersection where we are inspired as a group of soccer fans, a place where we can grow together, meet each other, create this community. And to be honest, the amount of nonprofit, good cause work I've done with these people within the last year has been really remarkable, and that's actually why I came today, because that intersection allows me to meet the team, the players, the staff, and friends. And we hope to do better for this city, and please keep this place up for us. Please keep these nets down. Thank you.
Thank you. Last up, Xavier Obando. Welcome.
Good evening, President Davis, council members. I am here wearing two hats. First one is a hat with a New Mexico United symbol over there. I am the president of the Los Curcitos, which is the kids' supporter group of New Mexico United. And very briefly, we and our group, we put together aircrafts, puppets. We have, we support the march to the stadium of the Curse, the main supporters. But mainly, it's, I'm here because, as a father, I see my kids and other kids having such a thrill of interacting with their, with the players. It's so amazing, they just wait until the game is over, whether we lose or we tied or we hopefully win all the time. We, they are really, really, really love to be with the players. And that's one. And my second, I'm also the chair of the American Institute of Architecture Chapter Committee on the Environment, and I am here to communicate the members' overwhelmingly support in adoption of the ICC. We serve as the local community voice regarding sustainable design and building science performance in our state.
Thank you, sir. And that concludes our public comment. Counselors, we're going to move on to announcements, and then we'll take our break. Counselor Gibson.
Thank you, Mr. President. There will be a Finance and Government Operations Committee meeting on Monday, February 10th, at 5:00 p.m. in the council committee room on the ninth floor.
Counselor Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Land Use Planning and Zoning Committee meeting scheduled for February 12th has been canceled. The next meeting will be March 11th at 5:00 p.m. in the council committee room on the ninth floor.
Counselor Bennett.
There, Mr. President. There will be a Public Safety Committee meeting on Monday, February 10th, at 12:00 noon in the council committee room on the ninth floor.
And there will be an Intergovernmental Legislative Relations Committee meeting this Friday, February 7th, and Friday, February 14th, at 3:00 p.m. in the council committee room on the ninth floor. There will also be a Wanta Bow Hills Estates Public Improvement District Board of Directors Special Meeting on Wednesday, February 5th, at 10:00 a.m. in the council committee room on the ninth floor. And at this point, I think it's the pleasure of the council that we take our dinner break at this point. We'll try to return in about 30 minutes, and we'll get started with our public hearing. Thank you.